Who has any changes to the agenda? Okay, Tom.
If we could add the new business consideration of amendments to the capital assets policy, which came out of the Finance Committee. I think that process would have been a good idea.
All right, any other additions or changes to the agenda? All right, do I have a motion to accept the agenda with the changes?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of accepting the agenda with the change to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next on the agenda, we have our citizens' time. During citizens' time, I do want to remind folks you have three minutes. And we ask that when you are addressing the board, that you're addressing the entire board, that you not single out individuals, that we work as a group. All right. I will start at here. Okay, Peggy Lavender from Hanover.
Hello. You know, all of you, you all know me, but just in case, it's Peggy Lavender of Mechanicsville. I have been a longtime volunteer for the Monkey Regional Library. And I just want to say, I've been in many libraries in the last couple of weeks. We've had several events with the Hanover NAACP. And through my own air, I had a few mishaps with booking the rooms and they worked it out for me. And they're just amazingly helpful and saved my bacon a couple of times. So I went to the Henrico Library and because we have reciprocal agreement with them, we're able to use their facilities. And if anybody here hasn't checked that out, it's amazing. Henrico has demonstration kitchens, they have a recording studio, they have just amazing offerings that I feel really lucky that we have that relationship. And I've also been doing my regular volunteering with advocating for the Mechanicsville Library. And unfortunately, that has made me get a lot of hate. Our volunteers who speak out in support of our library, who support fully funding our library and keeping it running as it has the last 70 years have been vilified in the community. We get, we try to defend the right to read and get called porn pushers and groomers. And I really would like that to stop. It'd be nice if the board maybe made a statement about that, that we do not have porn in our libraries. If so, we should all have law enforcement here right now. So I appreciate the work you guys are doing. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on our list is Rodney Probst. Is that, did I say that correctly? Okay, and Rodney is also from Hanover.
Yes, Rodney Probst from Mechanicsville. I want to have a short say also on the library funding and access to literature. Hopefully without getting too much tongue tied, my supervisor was slightly more surprised than I was when I requested PTO to attend today and get up here and actually speak. But I've always felt that libraries have been a very important part of our community. And the funding and the staff. They would be necessary funding property, resources, education, and enjoyment of our citizens. There's access to forums, computers, internet, and helpful assistance from quality librarians for anybody that can't afford or lacks the skills to access all of these. I know my mother has had to take advantage of that many times because she can't even use a mouse with anything. So a lot of stuff like the door stuff, medical stuff, you got to have online access and so on and so forth. There's small community events that highlight someone's weak, that can be the highlight of someone's weak, even if it's a very small gathering. I know I attended one where I was the one person that read the book and everybody else had seen the TV show, but we had a great discussion of just even mixed up between the two. I believe it's important to maintain our unimpeded access to all of this that require our librarians and require our librarians to have the training, knowledge, and power to maintain their libraries and their materials. The ordering and categorization of the material should be in the hands of those who have spent years of dedication to gain certification that signals that they have the proper knowledge to maintain these materials. If our work is to be considered for exclusion, it shouldn't be because it is on a list with it shouldn't be because it is on a list with no context as to why it is on the list. The relevant sections should be highlighted clearly and have documentation attached that clearly states why it is outside lawful and constitutional protection. It is my belief this should be the last resort and meticulous care should be taken to determine if the exclusion will be enforced. That's pretty much everything. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Mary Crook. And Mary is from Goochland.
Good morning, thank you for having me. I'm here to ask just a small thing of the board, just to make sure that the information your colleagues are saying is true before you vote on it, please. Last month, we, everyone attended the board meeting, but wasn't on the floor, had to sit here quietly while one of you said multiple false and misleading things, then called for a vote, and the rest of you passed unanimously without a single pause to check for accuracy. The main false thing was that the middle grade book Cross My Heart and Never Lie is listed as juvenile fiction in our system, but is aged up as Y.A. in Henrico. As I sat here during the meeting, I could look on my Libi app, my library app, and see that that is false, because I also have Henrico card. It's listed as juvenile fiction. It's listed as juvenile fiction on Amazon, on Google, for everywhere. So that is the correct place to have it, in our libraries. But not, I didn't see a single one of you check that, or ask a question, or pause so that we can all check it, you can all check it together. And then the second thing is that parents have no way of knowing information like age range or topics of a book when they come to the library, which creates confusion for the parents. That's the other false thing that was said. That really should have stopped you all getting in your tracks right there, because the library is a wealth of knowledge. And not only that, but it takes just a few seconds to literally look up anything you could ever want to know about a book on the internet. And if you're at the library, you have the librarians to show you how to use the library, I mean, if you use that internet, you have free access to the internet. There is nothing stopping you from knowing every single detail about a book before you can check it out for your child. And then a misleading thing, to imply that that book, that middle grade book, is in any way inappropriate for middle schoolers. It took me less than an hour to read. It is the most innocent middle grade book I've ever read. At one point, one of the girls gets a boyfriend. Her friend says, ew, did you kiss him? And she says, no. That is the extent of any sexual thought at all. That's it. I kept listening for something, nothing. But that was implied that it was inappropriate for middle grade children, and everyone voted on it, and that after that, the librarians had to do extra work over this month because of that. That's the issue. That book was categorized correctly because the system already works, but there are people on this board who want to do it themselves, so they tell you it's not working, to trick you into giving that power to them, to not let them trick you. Not a single one of you checked any of that information. You blindly accepted it, immediately voted, and misappropriated accounting resources to force these librarians to do pointless work over this month. You can't set up your own triple check budgets when you're misappropriating county funds just this month. Maybe you think it's not harmful yet, but this train is already on the track of censorship right now. Every time someone on the board says distrust in librarians, they lay another bit of track and pick up speed. Every time they spell lies that you don't challenge, they lay another bit of track and pick up speed. If you don't speak up now, you'll not be able to stop it. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Susan Laskellet from Goochland. And Susan is a former Board of Supervisors member. We're happy to have you.
Hello, thank you very much. I'm Susan Laskellet from Goochland County. Eleven years ago, our Board of Supervisors by unanimous vote decided to resign from the Virginia Association of Counties. That organization comprised membership of every county in the state, and they have a national parent organization. But why would we do such a thing? Well, the reason why is we had actually had a few disagreements with them, but in 2013, we had a major disagreement. They were advocating for property rights, against us, property rights. They wanted counties to have the ability to, by eminent domain, take or damage personal property, and we could not disagree more. Fortunately, that November, the citizens of this Commonwealth did agree with us and voted over 70%, so our property rights are protected. So why do I bring this up? We have, we have been members of this organization for as long as we can ever remember. And we had a few people that asked us when we decided to resign, what the heck are you doing? And this is a state, a national organization, they're prestigious, you get a lot of benefits for them. Our answer was, why are we taking our citizens' hard-earned taxpayer dollars and giving it to an organization that's working against us? So no one, no man can serve two masters. You either serve your community, or you serve a state or national organization. And I'd like you to take that into consideration as you consider in the future what organizations you may wish to be a member of. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Dorothy Wassenberg. And Dorothy is from King William.
Thank you. I've been here before. And then like some of us, I have read several books also that are in the library. This is a current one that I'm going to be talking about today, so it would be a good one for some of you to read, because it's a little more explicit than some of you aren't familiar with. I'm Dorothy Wassenberg from King William County, District Four. I'm here to continue to request that the library assistant place these sectionally explicit books and pornographic books in the children's section of the library, in a separate area of the library for the adults. I suggest in library card that for the children, that lets the librarian know that approval is needed by a parent who can check these books out. This book was just wrote when I read it. Last January, at the PRL meeting at Adley Library, I heard Paul Jameson talk about Dakota, Virginia Article Five obscenity and related offenses. He stated he had heard citizens call some of the children's books in the kitchen section of PRL kiddie porn. That was a new term. Books like Flimber and Sex is a Funny Word by Corey Silverberg are just two of the books that we were talking about. He suggested you as a group, meaning the PRL, evaluate these books along with many others to see if you do think they violate spirit and letter of this part of Dakota, Virginia. The following is an example of a book, and I have to say violates this and should be moved from the children's section of the library. The book is called The Jack of Hearts by L.C. Rossett. It doesn't sound any different from most books in the library when you look at the surface of it, it really doesn't. But however, it starts out with, and I quote, the very first thing in the book is, "My first time getting it in the butt was kind of weird." I think it's going to be weird every time, the first time though. This is an experience of a teenage boy writing a teen sex advice column for his best friend's website. An admirer became obsessed with him, knowing he was hanging, who he was hanging out with, who he was sleeping with, and knew his mom was even dating. This is what happens when you met, full access to everything today. All saying that, they loved Jack, but not his lifestyle. Throughout the book, he continues to chat about guys going down on each other, enjoying foursomes, getting the F-word by the coach in the locker room during homecoming, giving teachers go jobs and hoping this will improve their grades. What a weird way to improve your grades. Girls chat with Jack about such things. Says, "My boyfriend really wants to do anal, but I'm nervous about butt sex. It's not like we're virgins. Make sure you want to do it, because it's going to be uncomfortable," says Jack. Clean up afterwards, because if he goes inside you, it comes out pretty gross. Start writing him facing forward so you can control how deep he goes. This is all in this book, guys. It goes on with guys giving go jobs, talking about how they react the first time, losing their erections, sucking, you know what. Feet in the air, against the wall on the floor, tell what you want, double-headed dildos, even one push out of the butt. Sex and love aren't connected. To some of us, love, marriage, and then sex is right. But this book is about gays, trans, et cetera. With this type of material available in our PRL libraries, we would like to see the county personally pull out of PRL. But until that becomes a reality, ensure librarians put these in a separate vocation. Thank you.
Can you clarify where and why were you that book?
It was in the under-18 section.
Thank you.
Under-18 section doesn't exist. Perhaps young adult.
Well, that's what I don't change.
Young, older teens.
Thank you.
Which is not children.
Let me just clarify that this is in the young adults, you're right. All right, our next speaker is Sharon Landrum. And Sharon is from King William.
This book is brought to you by the Monkey Regional Library and the taxpaying citizens of King William, Hanover, Goochland, and They Live by Stephen Salvatore. And I quote, "Back in our school, we've been in Xavier finding frantic retyping. Quote, 'I have exactly 50 minutes to learn everything about the mechanics of gay sex because our education system failed me. And gay porn is butter produced hell into Google. They shut the door and take turns vanishing in an assortment of lube, dildos, and condoms. Xavier bust open a shoebox filled with more elaborate sex toys, silicone prosthetics, prostate, and massagers. And now my head is too airy. I'm going to pass out from the combo pack of the information deluge and my embarrassment at being woefully unprepared. Even though I've been jerking off to gay porn for forever and have seen many a thread on Reddit about prepping for anal, I'm overwhelmed by the possibility of actually participating in getting dipped down, as Benny keeps saying. Is this really happening? Noticing on hunger ventilation, Benny says, 'You're such a little verge. Don't worry, you don't have to go to Penny. There's lots of other stuff you can do.' Penny, I am penetrate of," he says incredulously. Next part. "Ladies, are we decent?" Benny's voice echoes through our door. "Definitely not. My dick is totally in Jack's hand." When Benny follows up with a knock on our door, Jack shoots up off my bed in a panic, like he got caught watching gay porn by his mom right before church. Jack keeps his head down so nobody sees his face. As it turns out, he's had prudish, prudish, but he's not horny. Next. "He straddles me again. We press into each other and I taste myself on his lips. My turn, a whisper, pushing him off me and onto the desk. Legs splayed out before me like some sort of religious painting, all hard brush strokes and bursting colors and golden rays of heaven. The artist's hand heavy on me, grabbing hold of him, feeling every heart inch of him between my lips. I am both spectator and subject, artist and patron, worshiping at the altar of the divine." Next. "He reaches for the lube and condom. As he towers over me, body slick with sweat. Already I close my eyes. Go slow, I'm forced to suck him in a breath. He pushes against me, shoving the tip inside with a hop. I let out a yelp. Slow. Sorry, are you okay? He leans down, kisses me softly, and my body relaxes. I exhale, and he slides deeper inside me, enough so that I convulse, a confusing swirl of pain and unbridled pleasure. Should I stop? No, I beg, just hold steady for a sec. Breathe in, relax. Feeling his weight, his power, his control, breathe out. I open my eyes, and the soft lines of Jack's face are all I see, and it's enough for me to let go and let him in. I nod, and he goes deeper in my head roll. He's so close, closer than he's ever been before, sharing my body in ways I never dreamed were possible. And the faster he goes, the more I hope this memory is. After this, I can't go back to living and breathing and walking around without him inside me. His legs open for me, and at first I do what Jack did, but an animal fur leads me down farther, using my tongue to get in ready. Instantly, he moans and is so primal that it makes me go harder. 'I need you, please,' he begs. F me.
And this is not porn. No, 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 this is not porn, not at all. This is wonderful for minor children to read in Monkey Regional Library.
Can you give the title again, please?
And They Live.
By who?
Stephen Salvatore. It's at Mechanicsville, Goochland. It's published in 2022.
And it was in young adult fashion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Mitchell. And Audrey is from King William.
Good morning. I'm here to speak to you because I am concerned about the constant insidious complaints about books that need to be removed or moved throughout the library. And I understand when people stand up here and read certain things, I understand their concern. However, when you have a child who is under 18, the parent signs on the card that they are responsible for their child's books. So at that point, it kind of concerns me that this has become a debate. The constant attack on libraries and books that finds some, that some people find offensive, it hasn't been gone, it hasn't, it's not new. 1966, Hanover County banned to kill a mockingbird. So it's been going on for years and years. But just to be clear, I read a lot of different books, and sometimes I get a book here at the library and it's, it's not for me, and so I just return it. I don't read them. My children have gone to the library, Hanover Library, for almost the last 45 years. And we, there have been times when I've asked them, I don't believe any of, they've been damaged, I don't believe they've been corrupted. And why? Because I made it my job to make sure that they were getting books that I felt were appropriate. I appreciate everything that the Monkey Library does. It brings communities together. And not everybody's going to agree on every single thing, but I will say, and I'm sorry that this national trend, bash libraries, threaten librarians, and proliferate moral outrage without a non-existent threat, is a problem. As parent and grandparent, as parents and grandparents, we're responsible. And most importantly, we need to understand that the freedom to read is the freedom for everybody to read, and the freedom for everybody to see themselves in books. If the book does not apply to you, just don't read it. I hope people ignore a lot of the noise that's being drawn about, and I hope people do the right thing in the future. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jen Stroger. Jen is from Gooch.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much. Thanks for all you do for the library. We're all here yet again to talk about this crazy lie that there's pornography and dangerous books in our public library, that this library is dangerous. This is about democracy and about upholding our constitutional republic. When democracies flourish, they do so by expanding access to thoughts and ideas, and that upsets people who then try to shut it down. The Civil War, the Red Scare, what's happening now. Democracy expands, and those in power scare people into shutting it down. We have attorneys here. If there's pornography in the next room, let them know, call the sheriff's office. This is about free speech and privacy as well. Sequestering certain books, making citizens ask permission to check them out is an affront to the freedom to read and explore and access information. Parents need to parent their kids. The idea that pornography exists within these walls is ridiculous. This is withholding information and an affront to free speech and democracy. It's an attack on LGBTQ+, Black and Brown, and other marginalized citizens, and it's the dumbing down of society. So I, many of the comments in this room, I really appreciate all you do for our libraries. Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker is Danielle Floyd. And Danielle, Danielle is the new Hanover Board of Supervisors member, and you're not limited.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, my name is Danielle Floyd from Hanover County Board of Supervisors. I represent the Chagall County District. A Hanover County resident came to me and they asked me to speak at this meeting on their behalf as I was elected to be the voice of the people. So I am here. I'm going to read the email that they sent me. Miss Floyd, my wife and daughter attended toddler storytime at the Adley Branch Library on 21424. The library employee read a book called The Family Book, which included a same-sex couple as one of the families. When my, when my wife realized the book contained this content, she quietly removed herself and my daughter from the storytime. I followed up with Tom Shepley, the Monkey Regional Library Director, to file a complaint that the book contained content that normalized homosexuality. I had not received an encouraging response or an apology from the director, so I have reached out to you. Mr. Shepley followed back up with me on Friday, 21624, to provide me with his disposition of the events on 214. He informed me that the content of this book was age-appropriate and reflective of the community. He proceeded to argue with me that the content didn't necessarily have anything to do with sexual orientation, and that the two fathers could have been from a blended family. The lack of concern from the Monkey Regional Library on whether the content of their toddler storytime books offends their community members is disappointing. While my interactions with you and Mr. Martin have been very helpful and passionate, the interactions with the library and the director have not been. My family and friends are very skeptical of attending any other library events for fear of having to explain inappropriate topics that are evidently being pushed in our libraries to our young children. The members of this community and I look forward to hearing from how Hanover County and the Monkey Regional Library will move forward from this. So as I said, I was here to, to read that and be his voice since he could not be here. Personally, I think this librarian could have chosen any other non-controversial book for toddler story hour. Instead, she chose to push her agenda on children, and people wonder why there's division, which we do not need. I'm not asking for this book to be removed, so I'm going to be very clear about that. I am asking for librarians not to use toddler story hour to push their agendas, but to instead choose non-controversial books, which there are plenty to choose from. I don't think that's unreasonable or asking too much. I would like for the situation to be dealt with. Personal agendas do not need to be pushed on children, and we do not find that acceptable in Hanover County. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers who would like to speak? Well, thank you all very much. Before we move on, I would like to introduce, we've now met Danielle. Thank you for being here. We have some other folks who are here that I would like to introduce. We have Jim Taylor, who is our representative from the Board of Administrative.
He's a head of county district.
Yes. And Dennis Walter, who has been our legal representative. And Dennis, I'm going to let you introduce Ellen Foyder here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the library board. I'm here this morning, first and foremost, if there was a way of an introduction, Ellen Foyder, who is sitting next to me, to let you know that going forward, she is going to become the primary point of contact from the Haver County Attorney's Office to both the library board, as well as to the regional library. Ellen has been working in the county attorney's office for three years now, as time flies. And her and I, our paths have been similar a little bit. We've had some local government experience. We've both worked with legislative services down at the General Assembly. I think that her talents, her experience, and her interests are going to serve you well. Part of it is just an ongoing periodic review that I have in terms of workload in my office. And there's also a realization that I want to make sure that you all are well-served. And the Fourth Wednesdays of the month, which is when the library has its board meeting, is also when the Board of Supervisors has. So I know next month, the School Board and the Board of Supervisors in Hanover is going to have a joint meeting on the Fourth Wednesday. And so Ellen will become the primary point of contact for the next month or so. We're going to have a transition, though I'll still be dealing with some things. And I always will remain as a secondary point of contact. But I did want to introduce Ellen so that you, some are faced, and you'll be staying here more in the future. I've enjoyed my time here, and if Ellen ever needs me to step in, probably will see me again. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dennis, for your help.
Yes, thank you, Dennis. Thank you. Good seeing you.
And welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, I'm delighted to be here.
All right.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. And the consent agenda includes the minutes from last month's meeting. It also includes the acceptance of the January 2024 Board Report, the January 2024 warrants, the January 2024 fund schedule, and the January 2024 deposit report. Are there any? I have one change. The deposit report says December 2024. It should say January 3rd. It should say January 3rd. Okay. So we can change the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
It's moved.
Okay. Excuse me, what's? Fund schedule? That's part of it, correct? The date on the fund schedule should, I believe, should say 1/31/24 instead of 23? The fund schedule spreadsheet?
I'm sorry.
It should be 24, not 23. Those are the only changes I have.
Do I have a second to a motion? To accept the consent agenda? We have a motion on course. Do we accept it as amended? It is, yes.
Perfect.
Yes. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll say that.
Okay, hearing. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with "as amended," please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the consent agenda has been accepted. We're ready to move into whole business. The first piece of business here is the Queen's departure updates, and I'm going to turn to you for that. Oh, we did not do your directory report. I'm going to turn to you for the directory report first.
I wasn't sure.
No? I just missed it.
Do you have a printed?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, members of this board. It has not been very long since we've been together. My report plus a number of meetings that we've attended have a number of bullet points in terms of work that's been addressed. We did spend some time considering the options, differentiating between elementary and middle school works with the juvenile collection. And an update, we've been talking about accessibility in the libraries for a while, and we ended up signing an agreement with the Office of Civil Rights Department of Education as we're trying to address some concerns from citizens, particularly at the UKW branch. I think I've stated in the past, we've done a number of changes to the branch. The Office of Civil Rights is asking us to do a fair amount of assessment to make sure that the building is accessible. I have copies of the agreement and [inaudible]. The gist of it is the earlier sort of time frame has us making assessments, measurements, documenting things, and then have to report back to the Office of Civil Rights. They have a number of concerns with the exterior of the building, because the building is in a shopping center. There are multiple tenants. These concerns have been kind of being expressed, I guess is the best way to say it, for some time. The landlord had agreed to have the parking lot, like seal code, re-strat, that kind of thing, back in late summer, I guess early fall. That work was not done before the asphalt plants shut down, so that is still an outstanding piece. But we have some assumption that there's an interest from the owners of the property to do some of this work, but we will need to work through that process with them as well. There's a number of changes that need to be made just with the parking lot, and probably the more significant piece of what might be repaired or updated has to do with the ramp that provides accessibility from the parking lot, from the handicapped place, the parking places, up to the sidewalk. And we've had that assessed with staff members from King William Building Department, and we're told that he thought that it was all right. The Office of Civil Rights, I guess at the very least there withholding their approval or agreement with that, as though they're able to provide some additional documentation. A lot of what Office of Civil Rights has done has been done very well. We have provided them with some photographs, ourselves, measurements, et cetera, and quite honestly, they're looking at using like cool maps to look at the parking lot. So there's some work that will need to happen with, sorry about that. That will need to happen in terms of the assessments and trying to make sure that everything there is okay. There are a few issues with the building and some leaks in the roof that also need to be addressed, and I would say sort of some work that can't really happen until some of those things have been completed, and those would not necessarily be the library's One of the things that is kind of a new twist, since the agreement is signed, is that Jack Bailey, who is the sort of patriarch of the family that owns the shopping center, has a wife. And so we're not really sure who we're going to be working with from the family of the trust at this point, which we think is probably going to be his son, who we have talked to in the past, but we don't really have an ongoing working relationship with him. Those are some pretty firm deadlines that we need to meet with the Office of Civil Rights. Do you have questions that you'd like to ask about that at this point?
I do. What kind of costs will be incurred?
Can't answer that question until we have a better understanding of what amount of work has to happen.
But the work is all external, it sounds like.
Most of it. There are a few things that are still working to complete inside.
Okay, so they don't own the building, unfortunately doesn't own the building, so will this, you're saying you don't know if the son, the owner of the building will agree to, do they have to agree to this?
They are the property, so yes, they would have to agree to make those changes.
And if they don't agree to make those changes, then what?
That will make fulfilling the agreement with the Office of Civil Rights difficult. And I guess, I mean, Dennis was with me as we went through all of this, I mean, I guess the end point would be that they would probably end up losing a sense of tenant, but we would not be able to operate the library in that building.
Okay. So either they agree to these changes that have been requested by the OCR, or basically brow?
I think there'll be a process.
You mean through a process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where we'll have to see how it works.
Okay. And do you have the timeline that said? This, so let's see. So assessments are occurring right now, is what I'm seeing.
Right.
So there is a timeline, but just knowing down the line that that could mean, Dennis got it correct, finding another location or having that as a possibility?
Mr. Shepley and I work with DOE on the timelines, and you'll see that the assessments happen, as you pointed out, sort of, they're the ones that are first and foremost. The goal is to have our deadlines for the library, to have all the work completed over the summertime. It gives adequate amount of time for us to work with the landlord if there are the exterior things. For those of you who are interior things, it gives us a little bit of time. It also recognizes the fact that the library's lease expires on June 30. Every year, it's an automatic renewal, but it's a June 30. And so if it becomes obvious in April and May that the landlord is unwilling or unable to do the exterior aspects, then the matter will become medical for you, because obviously the library cannot be operating a branch that's inaccessible for folks. We don't know what those options are. Our hope is that the landlord, to have a good product, will want to do this for the benefit of the entire shopping center. The lease provides exterior items are the landlord's obligations, not the library's. And so the next month or so, the assessment will figure out how much the library needs to do, and then those ongoing conversations with the landlord will let us know whether we'll be able to adhere to the summertime completion. We may need to request a minor extension depending upon work contracts and things like that. But if at the end of the day, we're not able to do those, then we'll be having conversations with King William, what other spaces they might be able to provide, and also other options. Because obviously, this is a place of public accommodation. Everyone needs to be able to access it physically as well as the services. We can work on the services, but the physical part is something that needs to be done.
Just a general question. How long has King William been in that space?
Long time.
Long time without accessibility?
There's a question there, yeah.
I mean, so it's operated all these years without the accessibility, and now, I guess I'm just.
So I'm going to, I'll say something, and Tom can correct me. Accessibility is one of those things that is an ongoing assessment, and as we indicated, one of the concerns was the ramp, which is serviceable, but I think DOE's main concern was that, for instance, at the bottom, the railings don't go all the way to the end of where the ramp is. So it isn't that it is inaccessible, but whether it meets, it fully meets current standards is a different question. So I would say that the library is accessible, but whether it is fully accessible is sort of a question. Now that DOE has the complaint, they work to strive to make it fully accessible. So right now, as far as I know, there has not been an individual who has wanted to use the library and has been unable to do so. The question is whether we can improve that. And now that we know that there may need to be improvements, we have an obligation legally, ethically, morally, if we go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom or Dennis?
I just want to clarify the last sentence under that accessibility ADA update. I think that's in the wrong, there hasn't been any allegation from anybody, right?
I'm sorry, you're correct. That is related to an item of the movement, um, two bullets.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure.
I have cut and paste. Sorry about that. Part of the issue with the ADA accessibility is that, is it is not super clear about what accessibility you have to mean when things were constructed. As Dennis mentioned about the ramp, the current ramp seems to continue to have a fair amount of slope after the railings. And for instance, we don't know if that is a change to happen because of additional paving or recent renovation of the lots, and maybe changes after construction. There isn't really clear and firm, you know, this is what it needs to be. You know, than everybody is today, the building's older, you know, there's a lot of, which is why I think we've sort of had, I don't want to say mixed messages, but we had a number of people evaluate it with us and say, I think you're okay. And this person at Office of Civil Rights is one you have to be there. They have the power to do that. So moving on, I have a bullet point related to the same situation that Ms. Floyd mentioned, the father of the child that was unhappy with Storytime. Can you turn to page two of my report? That is the page in the book. That's a book that has been around for twenty years. We have copies of it. They've gone out hundreds of times. I can't tell you, you know, when or where they've been used in Storytime, but I would guess that they've been used a few times because it's a fairly well-known book. When I spoke with the person, he initially did not want to give me his contact information. He was interested in taking it immediately to the Board of Supervisors, which does not give us, you know, much room to be able to respond to. I believe that he told me on the phone that the book was homosexual, based on the page that you see. Has the last sentence, it was used at two storytimes, and quite a few people attended.
Question, not specific to this book, just in general, do you put, like, what the book is going to be read prior to the storytime so people can do diligence on that? Like, I'm just saying, if it is something that they don't want to expose.
If the storytime is posted, if people were interested in the titles, we'd be happy to provide them.
We think it would make sense.
Yeah, but I don't think that that's normally happening at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this?
Who's responsible for choosing books that are read at Storytime?
The branch staff pick from the books that are in the collection.
So is that the branch manager, or is that someone else at the library who's choosing?
At, if we have a children's librarian, they would have been involved. They may have consulted with the manager, I don't know.
Any other discussion? Questions?
I have a comment. Divorced families, blended families, often will have two parents, has nothing to do with homosexuality, has nothing to do with, but children do have sometimes two moms, no mom. Just my comment.
Next, I wanted to make you aware of, I'll call it an incident that happened last week in Kennesaw Branch. There was an adult woman with her child, they were in the children's area, and a man and female team came into the children's area. They sat down and were talking. There was some kind of interaction that I guess didn't go particularly well. The female team talked to staff about it. Staff suggested that the teams relocate to a different area of the library, and they did. The moms stayed in the children's area for a while after that, and then later... The moms stayed in the children's area for a while after that and then later complained to staff about this interaction. The mom was alleging that the children were engaging in some sort of, I wouldn't say sexual behavior. She alleged that she saw the team females breasts. We investigated that and there's nothing to support that that happened. The, the mom, the mom seemed to be upset because staff didn't immediately take action to have the children removed, have them banned. The mom didn't take action to let us know that there was an issue initially, but staff didn't observe any of the alleged behavior. Hammer, sheriff's deputies did visit the branch briefly after that. And, you know, Ms. Schumacher was correct, the bottom sentence in the second bullet, the incident was investigated, nothing supporting the mom's allegations.
Sounds like it was a he said, she said.
I'm sorry, speaker.
It sounds like it was like a he said, she said, you know, we've got one, you know, it's kind of hard to verify something if you're not there and one person's saying one thing and one person's saying another thing is what I'm saying.
That is, that is true with that situation. We were able to review, there was video from the security cameras and there was nothing to see.
On that, I was going to ask that question about video. Do you, how, how many cameras are throughout the branches, just on, on average? I'm, I'm not asking you that. You have pretty good visibility of whether somebody's stealing something or somebody's, if something, if something gets vandalized, you could go back and typically be able to find it.
Yeah, so there are multiple cameras in each facility, kind of depending on the design, but really what is visible is the movement of people. It is not like, I guess the way I would perceive it to be, like, if this, if we were in jail instead, that you would have to have eyes on everything.
You're not sitting in your office with five monitors watching what everybody's doing? Is that what you're saying?
That is absolutely true, we're not.
Right. If I could. Well, I was just kind of curious, like, if somebody was to steal something, break something, what kind of visibility you'd have? And then obviously if something like that, just curious, like, what kind of visibility you'd have?
The, the only reason most was caught was because the, where the teams were sitting was from you to Ms. Schutman from the door.
Got it, right. We've, gosh, Tom, I can't remember, we, we put, we put cameras in all the libraries. How many years ago? At least, at least 10, maybe, maybe more.
Quite a while.
Yeah, quite a while when, when there, when there would start being incidences. Now we do not have, we do not have, for instance, what stadiums would have, you know, we're not, we're not having anything, we're not having anything at that level. But we had lots of buildings. This one, for instance, I'll use this one as an example. The, you could, you could come in the doors and the staff couldn't see who was coming in the doors until they were in. The cameras helped fix that. And we, we worked with the sheriff's department to help us, tell us where to locate the cameras and all of that. So this, this is something we've been working, we've been working on for some years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good comments.
Shut up. I've lost what? I was supposed to say universal memory, but universal memories are all institutional memory. Institutional memory.
Yeah, you have, that's the right word.
Any other questions or comments?
Just kind of moving through these last thoughts to have a little rest of the info. We have been moving ahead on the audit statements. We discussed this last week at the audience committee meeting, but there's, there's some changes still coming in terms of the audit. I mean, I'll wait until we're in finance to talk more about that. Montpelier and West Point, the work is continuing on both of those. I think we're looking at June for Montpelier approximately at this point. West Point is farther along, but there's a, a lot of logistics that needs to happen to be implemented before we can be the firm on the date with that. King and Queen, we are still working to finalize the cost of January to wrap that part of the process up. And then lastly, the budget, I will be at the King William Board Supervisors next week for their budget process, your presentation.
I have a question and a comment. Question is, are we going to stay within the $11,000 allotted for the King and Queen?
When I know what the number is. I don't know what that is.
I mean, do you, you don't have any?
My sense is that we are under.
That we are under, so I mean, you have an idea.
I have the idea.
Okay, so we're going to stay within that. And the next is, the request is that, could we please get the director's report before the meeting? It would be really helpful if we could read through this, these documents before you, you present them, just so, because I'm trying to read and listen to you at the same time. So if we could get them at least by Monday before the Wednesday meeting, that would be really helpful. Is that doable?
We can try to work on that.
Yeah, I, it's just, it's hard to read and listen and try to make notes and all that at first glance. Yeah.
It's sort of a visualization if we're, you know, some of these things we were still in process on the earlier of the week.
Right, which you could bring to our attention, you know, at the meeting, but the bulk of the information would be really good to have prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Tom?
I have a question. So on January 24, oh, 26, sorry, the Virginia Library Association had a meeting. I don't see that here on your director's report. Did you attend that meeting?
I think I did.
Okay. Was that an all-day meeting?
It was not.
It was not, okay. I'm just curious how we can involve some of your outside involvement in your director's report. I think it's important for the board to know what other things you're involved in. Was that on Pumunki Regional Library time or was that, did you take time off?
I took my own time for that.
You took your own time for that, okay. All right. The other part that states in our bylaws is that you would keep us updated with legislative agendas. Is there anything you'd like to report to us based on the General Assembly being in session and things are going on?
One of the things that I talked about last week at the finance is that the budget amendment to increase state aid has made it through both the House and Senate. So we are expecting to have another increase, two and a half million dollars. The way that works, it says two and a half million dollars in each year, but that's to have it be the same amount both years added to the base amount. We're expecting that to be approved. I know that we're talking about that in the news today. There is another bill related to the parental notification of classroom materials in schools. The Library Association worked with legislators to have that amended, would be the right word. There was language in the bill that was originally passed in what they called the enactment clause. And that does not show up in the electronic version of the cover on the line. And had, had to build some House and Senate to make that work. There was support on both sides to make that pass. That was initially entered as legislation by Senator McNamee, who of course is no longer in the legislature. But my understanding is that she also supports that change. And that was not part of her intention, would that be left out? And is actually helping to support that as it gets through the process. So we're kind of expecting that to be approved too.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Tom. Now we're on to standing committees. Finance Committee report, and I know that John is not here and he asked someone else to give this report.
Maybe that's me.
I think it might be you.
I've been really prepared for this, I was about to start with that statement. But luckily the meeting was not that long ago. Those, I would say, a lot of continuation of things from our previous finance committee meeting we've had. I'm kind of looking to see, you know, who is sitting here now. For folks that were not at Finance Committee, I tried to provide you with copies of the documents that were handed out last week. Things about the library's reserve fund, the investment of that, how can we invest the reserve for the, for the good of all of us? So there should be a couple of documents for that. There had been a request for a calendar of kind of the year financial process that we ended up going through. There should be a copy of that. Anywhere? There, Miss Lund asked for the deposit report. I believe that was entered request.
Yes.
And that was on your consent agenda, if you saw that. And like, between the deposit report and the fund schedule, you can see that the money coming into the library could launch, those, those two numbers are the same. That's a good point. Balances. We talked about the budget process. Things are happening with the budget, all the legalities, we can work on that. I guess I'll do it tomorrow night next week. I think we may have some amendments to our request if we get towards the end of the year on this lookout, which we're kind of settling in on a merit number, but that's not too problematic. And then I think the biggest piece probably was to talk about the audit. And we had a few members of the board that kind of followed the line as the 22 audit was wrapped up and there was conversation with mayors about this capitalization, capitalization's changing in the world is about all I can really say. In the 22 audit, we had a number of things that the auditors felt needed to decapitalize the hotspots and these current books. But, you know, do you not cost a lot on the front end? They're well under the capitalization threshold, which is $5,000. So they're $150 items. We were told they needed to capitalize them and you have to depreciate them and that all goes into the statements. And with the previous auditor, that was kind of the change for us. And there had been ongoing discussions with the current auditor at that point in time because they told us that they're not going to have us do that capitalization. And they've gone through more deal work at this point in time and they're coming back and they're saying, we believe the library needs to capitalize the books and materials, which is a little bit different. You know, I usually say 25 to 30 bucks a piece, so we're well under the $5,000 limit. We do spend well above the $5,000 limit, you know, in terms of the capitalization. It, it, it would kind of seem to me that books and materials are a supply, kind of what we use as renewed business days a day. We don't necessarily keep them around forever, we don't have the space to do that. And when they go away, it's dependent on a lot of different factors. What, what I would say to you today is, we're, we're working through to do that. Coming back, we've come back and pulled numbers for the last six years for the purchases for books and materials and we're going to have appreciation and all of that. This is sort of a mathematical approach to it. It's not going to be, you know, this book was purchased on July 15th of, I'm going to get my members on, 2004, and you disposing of it in 2009 or whatever that would be, we'll, we'll be looking at gross, you know, you spent $300,000 on books and materials in this year and we've depreciated over a five-year period and it gets removed. The, I don't think the value of the collection's going to change that much. It will just have a numerical representation in the audit for the collection based on its age and what has been purchased. But it's reasonably big change. Having been through this, what I feel like admonizing in terms of the capitalization, I only know of one other library in the state that has capitalized their collection. So it will be number two unless, I'm just not hearing from the people that are doing this as well. The auditors have said that they've been able to see, they've been able to find other similar sized libraries, but they haven't told us who those would be or if they're even a genuine guess. So, related to that, I think last week, the biggest concern at Finance Committee was, is this going to slow down issuing the 23 statements? And the answer to that is, yes, it should is, but we're trying to minimize that at the very least. And one of the things that we knew had to happen is that we would need to update the capital assets portion of the finance policy. And I have printouts of that for you guys and if you can be a little patient, I can put it on the screen so everybody can see what we're talking about. Is this the?
That's fine.
Oh, I got it. Could you hold it there, could you? Could you do it back?
Oh, yes.
On the screen is, should be the same thing, is pieces of paper. This is the capital assets portion, sorry, of the financial policies. There really are three points that are being made here to change. One of which is sort of a holdover from changes with capitalizing the items last year, and that was this change in the second line, replacing five years with one year. So capital assets shall be capitalized per unit, costs earlier than a $5,000 expenditure, for which useful life exceeds one year, and meets capital definitions of land building improvements to building infrastructure, equipment. And then, we're adding, spoiler, or in the library's physical collection. So that's the second one, two things in A. And then, in B, capital assets shall be appreciated over the estimated useful life of the asset, and actually using should also be included in accordance with GAAP, which is the generally accepted accounting principles. When we were at Finance, one of the things was, I had sent this back to mayors to let them have eyes on it. The first two changes were language that we had presented the first time. It was their suggestion to change B to GAAP, so. And the reason why this is important is that we would not be able to issue the statements without updating the capital assets policy. So that's trying to help this happen sooner.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
Yes, it would need to be a motion and approved.
Okay. Would the motion be, motion coming from the Finance Committee?
It is not.
Okay. So we'll just do a motion. Okay, do I have a motion to accept these changes to the policies for capital assets?
I make that motion, which includes the deletion of the word "using."
Right. Okay. Do I have a second?
Stuck it.
All right. All those in favor of the changes to this policy? Who say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
I think that kind of concludes the Finance Committee report.
The only other thing that I did. I was going to just add that from that calendar that Tom built for the committee, they laid out their meeting dates for the next year, based on maybe every other month that they will be meeting. And I don't remember the date. I don't have my time here. I have your time. So, which I thought was a good step.
Every other month, beginning in May.
Right. And it's based on that calendar, so it worked out well.
I think it was kind of being mistaken. We're all concerned.
We consider that meeting the March meeting.
It's Tom's perspective.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Has Handler overapproved the merit increase yet?
They have not.
Okay.
That may not happen until.
Not until the budget.
Public area.
All right.
Can I ask Tom a question? Tom, when do you think the capitalization of the collection will be done?
Ken has made a lot of progress on it. We can't really sit down and like, I need to review what he's used, you know, kind of information going into it, just because he hasn't been here for these earlier years to try and make sure there'll be no trip on anything that way. But I think that the process is relatively defined at this point in terms of, you know, what we spent, what we spent, what we spent appreciating it out. He's done some really many calculations on what the value is, what will come in, and we have an idea of the, some of the edits will be in the statements. He and Michelle will probably do the bulk of that work, figuring out where it needs to be restated. So I think that that could be finished, you know, a week, maybe 10 days. I'm not sure how the auditors are going to be able to respond to this.
Okay.
Seems like it's a good check, though.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Okay, Personnel Committee?
Yeah, I got a handout. The only thing I have is a follow-up on the 360. This comes, I don't know if everybody out here went on for it, so I can email it, maybe I can share one. So that's what I pulled from the website. I did a lot of research on like, what would be best for what we were looking to do. Kind of settled on this one called Question Pro. So if you want to look up the website, I can send this out as an email. It's questionpro.com. And so I just copied and pasted a lot of this from their website about the approach and why, you know, what's the purpose of it. And I thought the, you know, sort of, you go a couple pages, and it talks about the top 10 reasons to do one. I thought was really some good info. And then, the last page I have attached is the pricing, so it's kind of hard to read the way it printed out. But the one that I would recommend we do is the one that's outlined in blue, which would cost us $1,200 total for a year. And then, we can decide, it doesn't limit, it limits the number of users on our side, so I would probably be recommending that I would be the user since I'm chair of the Personnel Committee, but obviously, I would get input from the Personnel Committee on what we're, how we go about it. But it doesn't limit the number of responses we could use. There's a lot of data, and it just, it's pretty, it's pretty simple. And, you know, looking at other 360 formats, you know, the pricing can get quite, quite a bit more, and it's one of those things, I just thought we could, we could give it a try for a year, or even a couple months, and, you know, if we don't like it, or we don't think it's worthwhile, we certainly don't bring it back to the floor.
Any questions? We talked about doing a 360 preview. Okay. Are there no questions?
So you would plan on doing this next year?
No, we'd start, do it as part of the review process this year. So, you know, get it out in March and have it as a part of the review for the end of the fiscal year. When do we review, in June, May or June?
We need to have it done in June.
Yeah, so I would, I would probably initiate the process fairly quickly if we.
Do you, are you bringing a motion to do that, or?
I certainly can. I know I didn't get this in front of the group.
I would say, you know.
I mean, we can punt it a month, and I still think that still gives us time to do it by June. I don't think it's, I mean, I know, we just did reviews at my company, and there was a three-week process, and it was over. So it's not like it, you know, you don't need five or six months to do it.
Do we know how much time this would take away from staff? Because we've put a lot on their plates. Is this going to be another thing that's going to be on their plate?
I would think it's like most review processes, that the ones I've been involved in don't take more than an hour.
Right. It's not time-consuming.
Answer a few questions, make comments where needed. I mean, it's, it shouldn't be a time-consuming thing, especially if we give them several weeks.
And to what level in the staff are you seeking input?
We had discussed direct reports. This wouldn't limit us to just that. I'm kind of open to what we want to do there. I think, you know, if we're going to not make a motion today anyway, that's something we can take time and think about and who we want to. But the cost is, the cost is basically on how many users we have. So if we decided that, you know, that we were going to give board members, you know, all of us an access, it would be $1,200 per. I think that's, becomes unnecessary.
Tom, do you have a question?
I, I think that, I mean, I think we need to have a little bit of time to.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need.
The vendor month and such, but I think we can work with.
Now, I'm happy to bring it, get, get the information out to the group and bring it back for the March meeting.
Okay. When are we meeting in March? The last one's.
Look it up.
For the Personnel Committee.
Oh, we don't have a date yet. But I will get one, and I'll get with you guys, and we'll get one on the calendar.
Okay.
What's the regular meeting date?
All right. Any other?
I want to ask a question of Tom. It's sort of out of order here, but down here, under Old Business, you have listed the review process used for the, for the library staff. And Tom was going to send me something to indicate how he does that, when he does, how he does, and sort of, it gives me an appreciation of, it would even fit into the kind of a 360 process that we're, to use the higher.
Yeah, we've got that on the agenda. Do you want to wait for that, or do you want to, do you think it fits better here?
Well, I think it fits better here.
Okay.
So, can you repeat that? I wasn't able to hear.
I am still not aware of how Tom interviews his staff as a review process each year. And I'd like to know more about how he does that, when he does that, the type of rubric he uses to investigate his staff, and then develop a work program for them if there are limitations or things that he would like to see them excel in. I don't know how he does that.
Do you want to comment to that, or from here?
Well, I mean, I just, I guess to be able to be heard and see people, but. I think that one of the things that might help the board, staff, everyone work a little more smoothly would be that we don't have individual requests, that we, the board works together with consensus to determine what we're going to be working on, so that we know what the workload is, we're able to try to address things. We do have, I do have the evaluation, you know, as part of this today, but I think just in general, that would be the process that will help everyone moving forward, and that's what I'm kind of on the move at the moment, so.
But you do have some information about this today?
I do.
Okay. You want to share it now, or do you want to wait until the agenda?
Wait until it's on the agenda. Right.
All right. Any other comments or questions about the Personnel Committee? Okay. Moving on, long-term planning. Long-term planning has not met yet, so I, that's the report for long-term planning at this point. We will. We've got, I've got an outline to, I've been working on for.
So let me just say something too.
Yes, yes.
I won't walk around for this one, I'll just keep turning back and forth. The Virginia Public Library Directors Association has put together a group of standards for libraries to meet, and it's pretty interesting when you're looking at planning, and what are your goals, what are your objectives, what points? I mean, I'm a member of the association, and you can see it's a fairly thick pack of the paper. They divide things up really with the size, population being served by the libraries. So, you know, there's a lot of difference between monkey and Fairfax, as public libraries go. You get points for various things, and this is the first year that they've done it. I did go ahead and complete it, and I was, I was surprised at how low we ran. They, they did bronze, silver, and gold, and I didn't feel that I could score us with enough points that we qualified for bronze, the lowest level. I think that's kind of telling of, you know, what we're working on. I think that this might be useful for you to go through as an exercise when we are during the planning, and we're looking at various things. There are always projects that are, that are in process, and it might help you understand how to do some of the planning you want to work for. I just kind of wanted to share that. I was a little astounded that we didn't even make the grid.
Thank you. Yes, I think that will be a good tool. All right. We are ready to move on to Old Business, King and Queen's departure updates. Tom, again, I'm going to turn to you.
I think I kind of talked about that in the director's report, so unless there are questions.
Do, have we done anything as far as the, you know, we've talked about signage that we are going to have for the citizens? Has any of that been worked on?
We need to, we need to go back and kind of cross our i's and b's to make sure.
It's on everything.
Those pieces of, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. So we need to review that, it might be even.
Has the, has the King and Queen library opened? Do we know February 1st? I thought that would be.
They did open. I don't know what date they opened. They've been, they've been busy. They have the same meeting room reservation software that we have. They have a website. They've got a library catalog, sort of sorts. They've been getting materials. I think the last time that I was aware, they had about 20 items, 21.
And they do have a board. They, they have a board of trustees that they have formed.
Actually, I kind of forgot about that because that wasn't, that's a legislative change, and that did pass the legislation. Sorry, there's no controversy with an item like that generally somewhere.
So they don't need to have a board?
They will end up not needing one again.
Any other questions about King and Queen?
I couldn't hear anything else said. Don't talk to each other.
Do you need us to repeat what was?
I could hear, I could hear enough to expect King and Queen, for sure, all facing that way, you weren't talking into the microphone.
Apologize for that. I'll use the microphone. If there's anything else.
Thank you.
King and Queen does have their branch open.
Okay.
They have about 20 books. They have a website. They are using the same meeting room software that we have used.
Okay, good.
This is just an observation, but I know that one person that goes there for wireless, I've seen them in our branch. He says the staff's really nice. That was all, the only comment he made, and I was like, okay. So the staff is nice, but they're using other facilities for some reason.
They may not be up and running yet.
I don't know.
They have.
They have ours, yeah.
They have a fairly good lift to make that happen.
The broadband in that area is very good, so there should not be a problem, but.
They took over the circuit that we would use.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments about King and Queen? Okay, on to B, which is the audit updates. The, for FY 2022, you had mentioned. The, for FY 2022, you had mentioned at the last meeting that you would have the PDF version of the board, board for us. Has that come in?
Actually, I don't think that we got it from Jerry. I think we've been using ours when we get back to them. I think that that has been posted.
Okay.
And that is posted on the budget finance page for the library board information.
But that's not, it's not the one from Jerry. It's the one that, that you all have posted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they, they gave it up to us. And I think with all of this, Mary's, I'm not sure. I think neither can I have a chance to circle back.
Even ask, ask for it, I can understand that. All right, um, any updates for the FY 2023? We had, I know you said now that it's been delayed in March.
Just, we're working on adding, adding this information about the collections as a capital answer. Sort of fixing that throughout the segments where it is needed.
Any questions from anybody about the audits at this point? All right, um, next item is a report from PDF, PRL staff, how to differentiate between elementary and middle grades for books within the juvenile section. I think Kristin did ask for this.
Yeah, and I, I just want to clarify. One of the citizens stated that I misled you guys as a board. And I just want to let you know, I looked again. Henrico Library has that book in the young adult section. It's not in the juvenile section in Henrico. It's in the young adult section. So I did not misrepresent that to you, so.
Ms. Schirrmann, I think, I mean, you are correct about that it is on the shelf there. And I think that the citizen is also correct in that it is in a different area she referenced, like in Libby, like in Overdrive.
Okay, well, Overdrive and on the shelf are two different places, so.
They, they are. And I really offer that as yet another sort of gradient here in what we're talking about with the various ways the items are described, I guess is, is what I would, would say.
Wait, on that note, does, do Libby and Overdrive have domain over how they categorize the books?
They do.
So the same book could be on one young adult, one young adult shelf and in juvenile on another, in another format? Is that?
Well, sort of, Libby and Overdrive are really the same thing. That's a, um, Libby is an app from vendor Overdrive. And those are going to be electronic materials.
Yeah.
And, um, where Overdrive places it in terms of audience is where they place it. It's the same for us as it is for Henrico, Chesterfield, and.
It's where they place it.
Other libraries.
But it's not, it's not based on where the physical book, it's not, it's not determined by where the physical book is placed in the library.
It, it is not, and to the best of my knowledge, if you wanted to make Title A an adult book in Overdrive, I don't believe that we'd be able to do that. Confirmation from the collection staff.
So who determines the Overdrive placement?
Overdrive staff, I would say, but there is information from the publishing world.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay, thank you.
So, um, I did also want to talk a little bit about the reconsideration request for Across My Heart, Never Lie. From the interaction that staff have had with the customer provided the reconsideration request, um, they had, knowing they checked the item out, knew what it was about. It was for their 12-year-old. And their nine-year-old started reading it. And they looked at it and they decided it wasn't appropriate for their nine-year-old, which is fine, all well within their role as parents. But they had already, they had, they had already made a determination themselves as to where it was appropriate in their family. And, and we're, you know, we're following that. So, um, in terms of the, um, I can't read this. Um, we're, we're told basically, um, to differentiate between elementary and middle grade books within the juvenile collection. And, um, I think that one of the things that we felt as we looked at that is that, there, there really is already a lot of differentiation available. There's a lot of information available in our catalog. There's a lot of information available to Novelist, which is now part of the catalog. And there's a number of people have found. There's a lot of information available on, you know, for people to look at. We have computers in all of the library branches. Many of us have computers in our hand, in our pocket, with our phones. And so, you know, I think it really kind of comes down to thinking about that as a process. And what I think we're seeing here with the customer who had their child at the Appie Storytime and the customer that was in the children's room at Mechanicsville, and the customer that was reading, or that had borrowed Across My Heart, Never Lie, is, and, and I'm going to say, almost all of the speakers that spoke in citizens' time today, all of them have, they're going to filter of how they are measuring this. And there is lots of information for them to use. So we can, we can add sort of various layers to that. But all of the various layers now still have to be integrated by the people that are using them, if they're using them. We have Novelist available. We can't force you to look at Novelist. We can't force a parent to review the book in their child's hand before they check it out. That's something they have to do. So in the end, what our recommendation is that we come to you with is, let's, um, let's go ahead and use these assets that we already have in terms of Novelist. And, and we can try to do a new program related to Novelist and help parents that are interested understand what Novelist is, what it provides, what it doesn't, and, and look at it that way. Because there really aren't good ways to sort of do this differentiation. And as an example of, you know, that, you might have a book that says it's for second through fourth grade and a book that says it's really for third graders. The one is for second, eighth, third, and fourth. There aren't, there aren't really good ways to, excuse me, to, you know, to make that be uniform because that information really is coming from the publishers, the producers of the book. So, so that really is the recommendation that we come to you with today. I can read what we wrote out, our recommendations to leverage existing products that provide the requested differentiations already, such as the Novelist suite of products. In addition, the library can provide programming for parents in the usage of the library catalog and Novelist, as well as invest in further readers advisory training for staff. The Novelist suite of products allows patrons to research and find titles that they wish to read with the ability to refine search results by appeal, award winners, read-alikes, grade lexile, and accelerated reader levels, I will say, when that is available for the various titles, and more. Novelist Plus and Novelist K to eight plus are provided by the Library of Virginia and are part of PRL's list of resources for more than seven years. We did add Novelist Select about a year ago, which is the linkage between Novelist so that it appears in the library catalog with your result when you, when you click to look at a specific book. That Novelist information that is available is provided right there. You don't have to go to a different website. Go to Novelist and look, and look yourself. So it's very integrated. But that is the recommendation we have for you today.
Um, I, I'd like to make a comment on that. I think that is, what you just said is deciding not to decide. I don't hear a solution to the request. And I also know my, in my experience in using Novelist, it is helpful, but it does not indicate graphic material in the books, which I think is what people would be looking for. I think that, you know, the request was made, how to differentiate between elementary and middle grades for books within the juvenile section. I think that's what we need to do. I think it's not, I think we really, really need to look at this. And we need to be able to have a better way for parents to make the decisions and have the choice for their children. I just don't think we're there yet. I think we need to dig a little deeper. And because we have a large community and an active community who love their libraries and love, you know, as we all do. But you cannot tell me by what we heard today that there's not pornography in our library because there is. That was pornography.
There is not pornography in the library.
As, as determined, as determined by Virginia Code, that's pornography. It is absolutely pornography. And I, I will not, I will not listen to that. The Virginia Code, Dennis, you gave us the Virginia Code description. And so I'm just, all I'm saying is that parents, there, there is a request was made to differentiate, differentiate between elementary and middle grades for books within the juvenile section. I think that's a valid request and I think it was ignored.
And a lot of that information is in Novelist when you're looking at juvenile books.
Graphic, the graphic nature of the books that we just heard today, it's my experience, and I'm, that Novelist gives you a, a good description of the book, but it doesn't prepare you for some of the more graphic details of the books that people respond to. So I just, I think that we're not, this discussion isn't over. Thank you.
Has, has the Monkey Regional Library team talked to the Henrico Library team, for example, about how they categorize books? Because, um, this is, this happens in many different books, you know, even, you know, non-controversial books like the Allen Bratz books, James Patterson middle school books, the Rick Riordan series. Henrico classifies those as young adult books. And we have those in our juvenile section. So I'm really trying to, and as a mom who has a middle grade student herself, um, I'm really trying to help people understand where those books are categorized. And I, it's my belief that when parents come into that juvenile section, they do not understand that that spans a very wide age group, that there are books in there that have been recommended for sixth to eighth graders, for example. So, and that's kind of, so, has there been any consultation with Henrico about maybe what some of their different parameters are for collections?
Yes.
And what have you found out about how they've decided to do things differently from from Monkey, for example?
They are unable to provide us with anything that is concrete about why they would differentiate with a title here and not a title there.
So it's basically their collections person who's making a personal judgment different than our collections person?
Different, different people doing that.
Okay, so librarians with the same educational background who are coming to different decisions?
Yes. I think, I think with Across My Heart, Never Lie, so that was really just coming out available to people in December. I believe just days before the January meeting at one national award. And so many libraries have added it. And it is a title that probably has sort of the most even split of anything that we have got. A lot of libraries have it as juvenile and a lot of them have it as library.
Can I make a comment? Okay, we are covering different localities. Hanover School's elementary grades are?
K through five.
K through five. King William, our elementary grades are different. We are six through eight.
That's middle.
That's middle, okay. So we are three through six. How are we going to, in one system, how are we going to, what is Guchlin?
Guchlin is K through five and then, um, six through eight is middle school.
Okay, so King William again is.
Same.
Different.
So the elementary school goes to sixth grade and.
Yeah, six, okay. No, that's middle, three to six.
Three to six.
Three to six.
Well, I may say one more thing. I'd like to, to remind this board of a document that was given to us by, by Dennis in March before I was on the board. And he provided us with the legal definition of pornography. Material of a sexual nature that arouses many readers and viewers. Printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activity intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. The depiction of erotic behavior in pictures or writing intended to cause sexual excitement. The U.S. Supreme Court and other courts have found that most pornography, at least for adults, is protected by the First Amendment. Child pornography treated differently is not protected by the First Amendment. So keep that in mind when you tell us there's no pornography in this library.
Part of the world that we're talking about here has to do with the, the context. And when you take things out of context.
How would that be taken out of context?
Did they read the entire?
Why is that funny? How is that being taken out of context? Those, those passages right in that book is pornography.
Not evaluated when you take it out of the full work.
Yes, you can, because there, there's.
Not really.
There are sections that, well, for kids, they're not protected by the First Amendment. I just don't understand it. It's, it's very clear to me that, that there is a place for these books, absolutely. But not for kids, not for little kids. That's all I'm saying. It's just not appropriate.
Can, can I?
But why is that so hard?
No, you're good. Can we get Dennis up to?
Yeah, I'd like to have Dennis talk about this.
I'd rather get instead of.
I mean, I'm reading the document that he gave us.
I guess my, my question, Dennis, is based on the Code of Virginia and the book that you heard Ms. Landrum read that was in a young adult section, do you, in your professional opinion, agree with Ms. Sloan?
I was, and I know you all were holding up something that I introduced. And I, I think when it comes to issues of pornography and obscenity, the definitions are very important. And I think as a baseline, matters that are obscene are not protected. The Monkey Regional Library does not have any obscene materials. And if we did, that would be out. The next question comes to pornography. Pornography generally is not a term that is defined in law. Pornography is more of a description. And the items that you listed talk about how you view an item to see whether or not it fits under the definition of pornography, whether it's pornographic. And that is, you take, the Supreme Court has said, you take a look at the whole book as a work as a whole, does it fit within those categories and those definitions? Does it appeal to a purry in interest? Those are the sorts of things. Those are the sorts of things. And there is a term for pornography in the Code of Virginia, and that is child pornography. Child pornography is against the law. There is a specific definition for that. Child pornography is not the same thing as pornography that children can access. Those are two separate things. Child pornography is pornography that depicts children involved in those activities. Again, the definition is in state code, I don't have it before me, but that is a term. So if, in fact, someone believes that an item fits within that definition, let staff know, and we'll review it under that definition. Just because there is an excerpt, though, that is in a book that is available to children that may be under that definition of pornography does not make it child pornography. And pornography, as that term is used, is protected under the First Amendment. And there is likely, and I think this is not just the Monkey Regional Library, I don't think it is just a, you know, Barnes and Noble, there are things that people would consider to be pornography that are available for the general public. Heck, if you watch TV over the air, network television, there are many people who would say that that is pornography. It is fully protected by the First Amendment, and it is available over the public airwaves. So anyone turning around the channel over, you know, free television would have access to it. You will not see obscene items, though, over the air. The FCC does not allow obscene items, does not allow items that depict child pornography over the air. So I certainly understand this is a very useful conversation to have, and when the Supreme Court has come in with respect to libraries, both within an educational as well as a public libraries, you all are charged to figure out where materials are, whether they be pornography, whether they be just complicated subjects, whether they be items that are directed for a particular target audience. What it comes down to it, though, is it isn't just a matter of taking one sentence, one chapter, a title, an author, and making that decision. It becomes a matter of a more categorical type of review, which you're charged with all the time. We largely delegate that to staffs instead of the experts. But at the end of the day, if you wanted to create, for instance, a brand new category, a section of a library that doesn't exist, you could do that. And then staff would do their best to try to implement that. It gets a little problematic because, as this discussion has shown, if you go from library to library, there are some commonalities, and if we start creating something new or different, it becomes just as much confusing as it is helpful. I realize that was a very long answer, but I have not heard anything today that would make me think, you know, we need to stop this meeting because people are saying things that are obscene or something like that. This is part of the discussion. But as I said, state code really only talks about child pornography rather than having a prohibition on items that might be considered pornography.
Could you address the obscenity code that has been brought up by citizens at many points in the meeting? Are you familiar? Or maybe you're not?
I don't off the top of my head.
No, I'm just looking at the minutes from last time because I know one of the gentlemen mentioned it.
So often there's a reference to a nineteen point two...
The Code of Virginia, Article Five, obscenity and related offenses?
Yeah. I can look it up, but I, my understanding is, again, that goes to things that are obscene, and those are things that have nev, for like, I'm gonna shorten, I realize I'm oversimplifying this. That is basically materials that do not have any sort of redeeming artistic, cultural, historical, social value to it. That's kind of the dividing line. And that becomes, becomes a matter of review and interpretation because there, I mean, I will use a good, bad example, which is when, you know, before my time, but when the ending of Bonnie and Clyde came out, or in The Godfather, there are scenes that are extremely graphic, and they're shocking. You know, when, you know, people gasp when they first see those things in the movie theater. If that was two hours of that, that certainly would be very different than the culmination of a two-hour movie to show this scene in context. And so those were discussions that people were having when those movies came out. Movie, the first fifteen minutes of Saving Private Ryan is another one, where is there value to that? And that is, that's a, that's not a lawyer's decision. That is a societal decision, and you all, in a librarian's role, you need to review what's before you in that lens more so than, you know, a simple checkbox. Because there are things that might seem innocuous that, that require more review, and there may be things that are really graphic and, I'm saying, more stunning, that make perfect sense in the context. And I don't envy you on the close calls, but that's what, that's why you meet, that's why you have these discussions, that's why you hear from the public to try to make determinations.
Now, there are some graphic novels that are in the, in the library. I think you had shown pictures, large pictures of some of these things that, I'm struggling with how that is within the bounds of what you're talking.
So when you say graphic novels, I'm just assuming you mean novels that are both words and pictures?
Well, no, this is basically...
Okay, because there's graphic novels, and there's novels that are graphic.
These are like comic, almost like comic books.
Yes.
Okay. And they, you know, but I know that some of them depict, you know, or not depict, they show pictures of two boys having sex.
Yes.
Or, you know, those kinds of things. And I know, how is that?
The Supreme Court has generally come down on the idea of the conveyance of an idea rather than the means by which that happens. Certainly, the written word is different than, stick figure art is different than highly detailed computer-generated, you know, visuals that are there. But the concept is still the idea. And again, going back to the determination of pornography, is view that in context. Because one panel of a three-panel comic strip may be one thing, one panel of a four-hundred-panel book is a different type of situation. So certainly, it becomes more clear what the idea that's attempting to be conveyed is, but it still is the underlying idea. And that may or may not be protected by the First Amendment, but that has to be viewed, has to be reviewed in context, what is actually part of that message, and how that interplays with the work, but also with the community at large in terms of whether or not that fits within the societal standards.
I think it's more than one novel.
Yeah. I do have a kind of a question, comment, and in terms of what you're saying about looking at the whole piece rather than taking it in context and stuff. But we all know that kids go directly to the dirty parts, right? That's what kids do. They, they hear about that, you know, page twenty-seven of such and such a book, there's, they're having sex or whatever. Kids do that, they've done it for generations, they'll always do it. It's normal. But I don't think that, you know, they're looking for the artistic parts of the book, they're not looking at it in context. And I think all we're trying to do is, like I said, there is a place for these books, absolutely there is. I don't, nothing should be banned, nothing should be removed, nothing, nothing of that sort. I think that it just needs to be appropriately placed so that the kids, that, you know, they're gonna hear about the book no matter what, and they could be lying for it if they hear it's dirty. And that's kids being kids. There's nothing we can do about that. But as adults, we have to, we have to be smarter than that. And to, to have a fighting chance, to know what kids are gonna, kids are gonna be kids, and that they have to maybe go into a different section to get that book. It's still there. Nobody's saying, unless their parent has requested that they not be able to get that section of books, which is, you know, we're all for parental authority. Absolutely, the parents should decide, but I think we as adults should recognize the reality of kids being kids and perhaps not make certain books readily accessible to them, and also give the parents a fighting chance to restrict perhaps, like if they don't want their twelve-year-old going in the, the next section up, then that's their choice. If they want their kid to go there, great, then they can do that. It's available to everybody, but, you know, let's throw some common sense into this and recognize that, that we have to, we have to do better by the kids, in my opinion. And like I said, it's the parent's choice, that's number one, and the books, there's a place for the books, but just please, you know, I'm begging for some common sense of where to put these things in age-appropriate sections. And they're not locked in a, in a special room, and they're not hidden, and nothing like that. It's just that, just use some common sense and recognize that, you know, kids aren't looking for deep artistic contextual meaning. They like to go to the dirty parts, and they want to get there fast, and we're just helping them. And that's, that's kids. Thank you.
I think too, that we need to, when we talk about tools, that was one of the things in the letter that we received from Hanover last year. And one of the bullet points was that we needed to provide more tools for parents. And Novelist has good, good information, but Novelist, and I, through the time, I have checked on several of these books that, you know, we have talked about. And not one of them does it say anything about explicit sexual content in the book that it has any of that. It's not, you know, that's not part of what is in that information.
Like, I want to piggyback on that, because I'm looking at the, and they live, in the website, and the description would lead you to not understand, I mean, here nor there, but in the, on the tags at the bottom, it, it doesn't say anything about graphic sex in the novel. And I, and I would think if the goal is to make sure parents have the information they need, it says gays, it says gender identity, it says college freshman, gay teenagers, body dismo, but it says nothing about graphic sexual activity in the book. So, go ahead, you go.
So, again, the various schools, like the catalog, I don't necessarily disagree with you, the catalog, the record, that is not the place for that. But the Novelist content certainly does. And if you'll let me read from one of the reviews, I am doing one of the things I said you can't do, because I'm only reading a portion, but this is for, at the title today, as they like, am I getting it right?
Yep.
Frank vivid sex scenes modeled consent informed safety and honest conversations about intimacy. That's in one line of one of several reviews. Does that help you with what's in the book?
Yeah, so that's in Novelist.
No.
How would a, how would a, how do parents know when they come into the library that that is a resource to them? The novel?
It is, it is there as part of the search when you search for a title.
Okay.
Large.
I think one of the things that, one of the things that I would like to sort of address is, for the, for the, for the parents that are interested in, you know, understanding that process, there's, the tools are there. And for the parents that are not interested in that, or maybe they don't worry about that, they're okay for their child to borrow at the bar, but it is still that parental piece that is the challenge. And while you're saying this should be common sense, we're certainly one hundred and fifty thousand people, and I think that there are other citizens in the service area that believe that the material should be available for those that want to use them.
And as, I said just that, didn't I?
Yeah.
I said just that. So what's the problem?
Well, so, so I guess, you know, we're talking about where they're supposed to be?
Give the parents the choice. Give the parents the choice. If they want their kids to read anything, they, the parent should decide. I absolutely believe that. But I think that, I, I will not back down on the fact that I think there's a place for common sense. And I think that we can all agree that, maybe we can't all agree, but there's certain things that kids should have to work a little bit harder to get to, that's all. Just the parent has to be, the parent has to be the line at the gate, in my opinion.
I agree with you on that.
And, well, what's not to agree on that? If the parent does not want their child to be in a certain part of the library, then they should not be in a certain part of the library. If the parent thinks it's okay, then it's fine.
So part of, I'm gonna have to probably bring Dennis back for this, but part of the case law related to all of this is that the support of the First Amendment says that you can't, you're not supposed to put it in a different location. And all of the material about these books point to them being written for a younger audience.
And that's, they're categorized by the group BISAC. And BISAC, if you peel back the layers, BISAC has a very clear bias. And I, I don't think that, I don't consider BISAC to be terribly parent-friendly. Now, once again, I'm talking about Goochlin County here. I represent Goochlin County and the community. I'm not speaking for every, every person that's ever gone to a library. I think that you have to represent and be true to the people that you represent. And I am, I am sure that there are people that would very much like their library to put books of the nature that we heard today in a section that is readily available to kids in first glance. It's, are they readily available to kids? Of course they are, as they should be. That's, that's, it's a public library. I'm just advocating that parents have more, more information, more, like the, the comment about a library card that would indicate which sections the kids could or could not use by parental choice, I think that's a really good idea. So, you know, I just, I stand by my comment of using common sense with this and when we're dealing with kids.
Mr. Shuppley, on the first line of your recommendation, you said, "Our recommendation is to leverage existing products that provide the requested differentiation already." Do you, does your staff have some, some suggestions on how that can be done and improved within the libraries?
Well, we're, we're talking about trying to communicate more with the parents about it.
Okay.
The idea, I guess, that, that this is, you know, very needed by parents, I will say that's not sort of proven to us with the parents that we're interacting with. We, we are not getting routine requests for, how do I, how do I figure out, you know, what better fits my child? The, the comment about an industry group, BISAC, that you made, that's one of the things that I kind of have said here already today as well, because you don't want to be filtering based on their suggestions, it sounds like, in your life, which is fine.
That's not what I'm saying.
Well, you're saying that they have a bias.
Yeah. And that's not whether or not I want it or not, is not, that's irrelevant. I'm just saying that, recognize that there is a bias. If you look at the, the people that are, the group that BISAC gives, it's very clear that they have a bias, and you can do your own research on it. I'm just saying that, that if that group determines where a book is gonna go, that may not be the best category for the, the library that, that we represent, that's all. It just, I think we need to look at some of the details of some of these books and just, and I know that you can't look at every book, I know that staff can't look at every book, I've recognized that. But once again, the onus has to go back on the parent. I, I realize that. And, you know, we need to give the parents more tools, we need to give the parents more, you know, the, the library card idea, I think is fabulous. But also, things that are screamingly obvious, I, I do think that we have to do better in, in putting books in the age-appropriate sections. I really think we have to do better.
I think that we do a great job of putting them in age-appropriate sections.
Well, I would, I would agree about, you know, eighty percent of the time. I think that there's, there's work to be done.
Yeah. And, again... Again, to go back to what we were talking about, so that parents that need this information have it and understand that, so that they can use whatever tools they feel comfortable with, right? I mean...
Yeah, of course.
You're saying that Bisac has biases. Book Works, which is the source for the folks that read today, according to the issue that they love, they also have a bias that doesn't fit with the role of a public library. But that's why parents can use the resources that they want when they're doing this. But there are too many resources and too many different opinions, just, you know, do the three sixty around the room on the folks that are here, and we're a very small subset of people in the region.
Tom, can I ask a question or just make a statement? Is there any reason why the library cannot put on the screen a, an encouragement for the parents to use these tools before they do check out a book? A statement of your own, sorry?
It is, it is there, like the subject heading to this one, it's there for you to, to look at.
I know it's there, but you were, you just said that the parents, many of them will go right by that. What about, what about the library itself saying, "We encourage you to use it," and make a statement right there, because of what's going on in the culture of the day? Why not?
I, I don't really think that that would fit, I don't have the ability to be able to do it, but I think you're also, you're looking at what seems to be still a very small portion of the service area that has this concern, and a very large portion of the service area that doesn't have that concern, it's not coming to you.
And I think it has, it doesn't, I don't think it has a relationship with that discussion we just had. You, as the chief librarian here, can say, "Because of all of the commotion," right? "In society today, we encourage you to do this."
What do you think about when you're doing this? Classes for parents?
Many of those parents will welcome your class. Just as a question.
Any other comments, questions?
I was trying not to speak, but I'm, I'm just saying one thing today, and I didn't want to, it was, it was a comment that made, that was made today, and I hope I heard it right, and I'll, I'll stand corrected if I did, but it was, we got a complaint because they came to a children's storytime. It wasn't a complaint because there was sexual content in it, it was a complaint because it portrayed a gay couple in it. Would the complaint been there if a gay couple with their child had been in the room? It's not against the law to be gay in this country. Let us, let us, let us as a committee try to think of the big picture. What you read is vulgar. You and I have had that conversation. It's vulgar. I'll give you it's vulgar. I will not give you it's porn. It is vulgar. My son would have soap in his mouth. I would have soap in my mouth if I read it to my wife, you know? It is vulgar. And, and we're, we're addressing a very difficult issue of where it should be, and what level needs to read it. But, Christine, you know, when you and John were, put on the board, I was at the meeting, I went to the meeting, and I was trying to, people had been at the meeting, I was trying to speak to everyone that I saw, that I knew had been to one of our meetings, whether, whatever side they spoke on, and thanked them for coming to that meeting. I kind of knew how the boat was going to go, but I was encouraging them to come back and speak again to us, regardless. But there were, there were two young ladies there that day that I wished our board had listened more carefully to. They were young, they were questioning their sexuality. It was a very emotional time for them. That book, it helped them. There was a book in the library that it helped them. One of the adults, actually. It was in the, the, help me, Tom?
Young adult?
Young, young adults, or the, what's it, 18. If they were older, they were older, but they were 16 to 18. That book helped those young people. And we have to, we have to, we have to think of, we have to think about that. That book, those, we have books in here that aren't for everybody, it's just like a channel on TV, if you don't like the show, turn it. If you don't like the book, go check it out. But there are books that'll help our citizens, and there are books that maybe should be in there.
Joe?
You know, and, and if you wonder where I, where I fall, that's where I fall.
I think, I think you kind of turned our discussion, the discussion that, that we were talking about is sexually explicit, not about, you know, LGBT.
No, no.
No, but then you said, you know, that in your, in your comments, you said that it's vulgar, but it's not pornography. I'm going to read this again, I know Barbara read it, but I'm going to read it again, and please tell me how this doesn't fit pornography. Material of sexual nature that arouses many readers and viewers, printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activities intended to stimulate erotic, feminine, and aesthetic or emotional feelings, depiction of erotic behavior as in pictures or writing intended to cause sexual excitement. I think...
It's subjective, I have to say, that's subjective, I'll say it's certainly done, it doesn't, certainly doesn't arouse me. If I have to say it on the record, I'll say it. I find it vulgar.
But, I find it vulgar, but I also feel like when you're, when you're talking about a 12-year-old child reading.
I didn't, I just, all I was asking, I wasn't trying to change the subject, we, but I, I think we were diving in this so deep, and we're, we're, we're picking at things, and, and we probably, and it's, we can make some minor changes, and we can probably reach a middle ground. But we can't, we can't make a middle ground when we say, "We have pornography in our library." We have pornography in our library, why is it here? It's against the law to have pornography in our library. It's not pornography. That's what, that's, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm trying to define the words as difficult.
I'm just going by the definition that we were given.
Well, even the definition has definitions, Dennis can explain, I mean, Mr. Walters can explain that better than me, not to give you that.
Can we get back to the item on the agenda? From my perspective, this item on the agenda about differentiating between elementary and middle grades does not necessarily have to do with sexually explicit material. For me, this is about parents being able to make a determination whether something is for a younger elementary age or middle age, and even just parents, like I said again, realizing that there is material in that section for up to eighth grade. And I think a lot of parents who go in there see juvenile, and they think little kids, and they don't realize that there are materials there for older kids. So, I had asked if you had any ideas about how to leverage the existing products. I know we've chatted before about having Novelist computer stations in the library with signage that says, "Parents want to check out what your child's reading," and just have them be able to scan a book and have that Novelist thing pop right up. Is that a doable option? Is that something that could be explored?
I would say that we often don't have floor space to add another computer, or power, or a network, and we have to, we have to purchase additional computers and support those for something that is already on the computers that are in the library today.
I did speak to your staff after the last meeting, because at Lee, I wasn't able to access Novelist, and I talked to them about that issue. So it's not always that easy to, to make it happen.
Why was that?
Because I needed to put in my library card number in order to get to Novelist from there. So, we want to make it as easy as possible for parents to find out as much information. It's a fast world, and I'm all about being really clear with parents about, if you're interested in a book for your sixth grader, you should be going to the juvenile section. Because I think a lot of parents think, "Okay, well, my kid's in sixth grade, we move on to the young adult section," and that's not the case, that's not how it's divided up, and I think we need to be clear with parents about that. So I, I would like to see some actual practical suggestions for how we can leverage those products and how we can better communicate with parents. And I don't think offering a course for parents is going to help, as Mr. Johnson said, they're probably not going to come. But what are some ways that we can connect with parents and let them know what resources are available?
Any other questions or comments? I think we can move on to the next topic then, which is the general review process for use of, for use for PRL staff that was a request.
The document that passed out is the performance evaluation that we use in the library. See that there are multiple sections with example behaviors, errors for comments, which supervisors fill in, get towards the rear, second to the last page, and we have additional evaluation that can be added, focus forwards, goals, place for employee comments, supervisor comments, signatures. And the way that this works, if you're, if you're looking at section one on the first page, just give name for ratings, get on the instructions. Section one is for citizen interaction and customer service, has 10% weight. The box that says proficient is a dropdown and can be changed to whatever category the supervisor's comments, you know, would demonstrate the warrant. And that ends up creating a weighted score at the end. Over the years that we've been using this, I can say that one of the biggest concerns is the use of the term proficient. People generally feel like being proficient isn't very complimentary, but proficient means that you're meeting the expectations and meeting your job.
There's a lot of good information here, Tom. I'd like to sort of come back and talk about it at the next meeting, if we have a chance to look at this.
As a discussion item?
As a discussion item.
Okay.
We evaluate people at six months after they're hired, and then again a year. There's always some folks that are empty, or you hear somebody that was hired in March, and then you hear somebody hired in December. Both have rules and processes for that.
Any other questions or comments on this document?
I don't have a comment on the document, but I do have our trustee handbook and part of the library director's assigned goal is human resources, which falls underneath managing other staff, including writing their job descriptions, hiring, and evaluating. So, I think Tom has, over the years, done that. We have never had an employee come to the board with any kind of problem with their evaluations, I just wanted to put that out there, that we might be creating a problem that we've never had. Our library staff usually run, runs a pretty tight ship.
Maybe one of the things that would be helpful in the discussion would be sort of a more sort of longitudinal view of the process. It was my understanding that today was about the review tool, but, but position descriptions are all available on the library website. We can show you the application form, we can talk about the process if you feel like that's useful, we're onboarding people pretty much all the time.
Does that sound like a firm approach?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and move on. Next item is the West Point relocation project, and you've talked some about this. Are there other items about the, their project as it's moving forward?
I don't really think there are, there's mostly just the actual work of getting, getting everything done, coordinated. It is a little bit of a bigger coordination project at West Point, and it is a modular lab, new shelves. New shelves will be set up in the new modular building, so books and materials from the old building can be put on those shelves. At West Point, the books have to be taken off of the existing shelving, that has to be disassembled, disassembled to the point that they can be moved, set up in the new space, and the materials then brought over and located correctly. the materials then brought over and located correctly.
So there'll be a period of time with West Point where the library will be down? What's your saying?
Probably we haven't really defined that, because typically when kind of push comes to shove on that, we figure out a way to help customers continue to receive items on the wall requests, et cetera.
Okay. So we kind of covered the next one, too, with Montpelier. Was there anything else with Montpelier other than you said that June is the date that you are looking at?
Yeah. I don't think so particularly.
Any other questions or comments about the two locations? Okay. Next thing on the list is the policy review. We started this last month. I'm going to pass out real quickly just a document that we'll share. There we go. Thank you. Okay. In our manual, one of the things that we are responsible for as board members is we are responsible for the policies of the library. And what I had asked last month was that we take a first look at the policies. Tom did send out the policies. I still haven't got mine, but that's not your fault. I think it's the USPS. And then now we're getting ready to go into a deeper dive on policies, but with a smaller batch of them at a time. My goal for the first was that everyone would be aware of what policies we have, what categories we currently have set up. As we're talking about the policies, the individual policies now, that we have a better perspective of what's out there right now. It's going to take us time. I do realize that, and when I say time, it's probably months, and we may end up setting up a couple work sessions to try to work on these two. But I think we can start off working in meetings if we keep the bites a little small. From my first read of the policies, and this isn't my first read, I've read it several times, but my first read this time, some of my overarching comments are that formatting is a mess, which we knew. We have several places where the policies are outdated. We definitely ran into that with the finance once in particular. That there is a lack of organization. As we've added things, they haven't always gotten put in categories. They've just been added, you know, kind of at the end of the fact we have policies. And a lot of this, I'm saying these things, but you do have to understand that as we're doing this kind of, as we're doing policies and we're getting them on the website and that kind of thing, that there's a lot of other work going on at the exact same time. So it's not like somebody's fallen down on their job. It's just it's been one more thing added to their job. So I'm not criticizing. I'm trying to say, this is what I found. Some of the policies have procedures with them, some of them do not. I did some research, went back through and looked, and the recommendation is, the majority of the recommendations are to have your policies and have procedures for doing the policies together, not to have them in two separate locations. And so I think we need to look at that. Again, some of ours have procedures, some of them don't. There are a lot of forms in our policies. I think most of them are configured differently. There's a few that are the same, but there are several different formats for those. My suggestion would be that we keep the form with the policy and create a form section at the end of the policies book, that you can go and look for the forms in that area, too. Again, building consistent format for forms and making forms electronically available so that they could be filled out online. And I think we can, we've got that kind of technology now, so I think we can do that. Again, these are kind of my overarching comments. So what I want to do first is just open it up to you all as you read through our comments, read through our policies this month. Did you have any kind of overarching ideas about the policies that you picked up on?
I have a comment.
Yes?
The, when I got the policy packet from Tom, I didn't, you know, wasn't overly familiar with them. I'd read certain things and this and that, but this is all together, one big chunk. And the first page says, "The Pumunki Regional Library policies are based on the ideas, principles, and values expressed in the documents listed below." And the documents are the Pumunki Regional Library, the Pumunki Regional Library Regional Contract, makes sense, the bylaws, the Pumunki Regional Library Board of Trustees, which we've been working on as well, the Pumunki Regional Library Plan 2016 to 2020, which obviously is outdated, that we have a new committee forming to update that. And then the ALA Library Bill of Rights, the ALA Freedom to Read Statement, and the ALA Libraries in American Value. And so I read the original aim of the ALA, which their original mission statement was to enable librarians to do their present work more easily and at less expense. And so I read the documents that, these policies that we base our ideas, principles, and values on. And as originally written, they are of value. I think that in doing our due diligence in updating our library policies, it is incumbent upon us to look at the interpretation and inflammation of these documents. It's just a standard procedure and due diligence, so that is my comment.
Any other comments or overarching comments that you all came up with as you reviewed the policies? My suggestion is that we go from here and start, again, we're going to do this as small, going to start out small. In your policies that you received, we have one packet that's called Library Policies, okay? And in that packet, you, there's a table of contents. The first three things are confidentiality of library circulation records, number two is customer service and safety, and number three is Friends of the Library. My suggestion is that we take these three for next month, just these three. And as you're reading through these three, I've put on this page, number four, the guidelines for review. Review for simple grammar, spelling, et cetera. Review for any dated content, things that are no longer applicable. Review for any content that should be added. There may be times that we feel like something else needs to be in there. Determine if the policy is in the correct chapter or section. I think these three are, but that, you know, as we get down the road, there are going to be some that may not be. Make any suggestions you feel would be helpful for clarity, you know, in the wording of how somebody's worded something. Make sure that the procedures for implementing the policy are included and make sense. So as you're reading through these, if they have these three, list procedures on the table of contents, so. And then make sure that any forms are current and easy to use. This is our time to take a look at the forms, too. So I'd like, as you look at these, that when you come back next month, please come prepared to talk in detail, and we will try to do a revision of these three next month. Moving forward, one of the things I'd like to have is a formatting template for the policies or procedures and for forms. And Tom, is that something that we could ask staff to help us with? Could it just build a template?
I think that would be helpful in the process to have us put something together that we can use.
Okay.
I know you have it in here, but one of the things I think that makes it more difficult is trying to have print versus electronic. I think one of the things you might want to consider as going forward is to have it just be electronic.
Okay.
And just have it on the web.
For the, for everything, for policies and for...
That would kind of answer your dynamic table of contents piece. I know I was reviewing a meeting room policy, and that had been, that was pointing to a separate document, so that would help us with sort of asset management and all that stuff. I think that is a type of the policy to go on to here.
Good, good. Okay. So that is something to consider as we're doing this.
Well, I'm sorry, just real quick, it was Friends of the Library, what were the other two?
Pardon?
What were the other two? You had three.
Oh, there is the confidentiality of library circulation records and customer service and safety.
Got it.
It's the first three.
Okay.
The first page. And again, as we're moving forward, defining the organization of the policies and the procedures and, you know, that, when you're looking at three of them, it's kind of hard to look at the organization. But as we're moving forward, I think we can begin to see, you know, where we want to have things placed. Then a calendar for the deep review. And I can go ahead and put together a calendar, you know, that if we're doing these two, or these three this month, you know, we do these two the next. And then I do think, like I said, occasionally, I think we need to do a work session to try to get some more of this done, you know, especially if we're looking at personnel, all of the personnel policies, or if we're looking at all of finance policies or, you know, something like that. So, yeah, on the back of this page, you will see a document, it's called a change log. And my suggestion is to do a change log for each section or chapter. I would consider this a section or chapter, this first one that I'm using, the library policies, or the finance would be a section or a chapter. And then on that, the change number and the date of the change when we make, when we make a final change, then on the policy, we would put the date the change has been made and the number that it is on the change log. And if you look at the change log, I did sample, and this is one from when we were at the finance committee recently, that changed the librarian to director. And I'm going to switch those two columns. I realized I've got those backwards. Location of the item should be first. Where is it located? And what is the change that you want to make? Change the librarian to directors. That requested was me. It wasn't me, but it was, I'm putting it as me. This is just a sample. The date it was submitted to the board, the date it was approved by the board. So when we do something, when we put the date in here, we put the number from the change log and the date on here that it was approved. And then a comment, if there's any kind of comment as to why that change is being suggested or why, you know, why it needs to be made. So as we're actually doing changes, that I think we need to start implementing this change log so we can keep track of what we've done. And again, it would be a change log at the end of each section, and that would go along with the policies online. It would be a place, you know, to keep that online. Okay. Any questions?
I have a question, just because you want to deal with the Friends of the Library policy the next time around. I noticed in the present policy that it says that there is a staff or board liaison who will meet regularly with each Friends group. Is there an assigned person with each Friends group?
Historically, we use our branch managers and deputy directors. That's liaisons. But the board also has that role responsibility as well, and sort of easier for people wanting to have one branch versus four members and six branches.
I mean, I thought it would be good if maybe the Hanover people, if we could each take one of the Friends of the Library and maybe contact them, because obviously these are also policies that have to do with them, you know, just to make sure that this is still kind of in line with where they are at. Does that make sense? Joe's looking at it.
In fact, I had written that, you know, it's good suggestion, yeah, get in touch and speak with Friends if they have any concerns about our policies, our policy.
I'll work with them.
Currently Hanover and Rockville.
Right, okay. But there are four within Hanover that are.
Any other questions, comments? And your homework for this month is to look at those three policies in depth, please, and make sure that they follow a lot of our guideline reviews that I have there. Any other?
I do have a question. What's the date in place of next month's meeting?
I think it's March 27th.
It is the 27th?
Fourth. Fourth Wednesday.
I have it at West Point. I have it in the calendars. West Point sets it right.
The other thing we're going to do is while we're talking, we have cards for the two.
Oh, it is four. Thank you. It is four.
And I skipped this on the agenda. I'm skipping all of the agenda.
Can we take something for the next?
Oh, we're checking.
These cards I'm going to pass around. I want each of the board members to sign. These are for the two retirees that were long-term retirees that we would like. Crispy, thank you very much, did a note in each other's.
And that event's on the 23rd.
Yeah.
23rd of March.
Right. I signed up the other day.
At the Addit Ranch at 6:30.
No more discussion on this. As you're signing the cards, we do have one piece of new business, consideration of capital assets that you mentioned. You've covered them. I don't know. Yeah, we did. But you didn't have anything else that you need to go with that? Oh, okay. Good, good. Okay, so we got down to the next meeting is on the 27th. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Certainly.
Okay, Joe?
Second.
Second, Ryan? All in favor? I opposed. The meeting is adjourned.